We're trying to try to box for board trustees regular meeting for Wednesday, October 11th, 2023. If we would all please rise and pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, noting of the roll?
Noted, there is a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
I can motion approve the agenda with the moving of item five, committee reports. Down two items removed from the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, the second by trustee Payne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, hearing none. Item five, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to prove the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, the second by trustee Colvin. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item number six, public comment on items not on the agenda. Members of the public, if there's some items not on the agenda you'd like to address this board with, we take those comments at this time. Seeing none. Item seven, board of trustee comments. We started down there last time, let's start with trustee Charles.
I don't have any particular comments. I guess the few I have with the irradiations and the community might be safe to them a little bit there.
Okay.
I'll tell you, one quick comment for, we have witches' night coming up, October 20th. So if that's witches' night, it's not warlock night, so guys have to stay home. I'm just gonna talk about it. Be careful. That's it.
Thank you, Rod. Clerk Wright?
Two items here. Number one is thanks to the board for approving that agreement for election services for Oakland County. That is the early voting agreement that we signed up with to coordinate with Addison Township and Orion Township for early voting. It's a 98 early voting process that will begin on October 28th because Orion has, Orion Township has an election for the village of Orion. And Deputy Clerk McCollum, Administrative Assistant Richter are going to be participating in the early voting as site supervisors, so they'll all be utilized in that capacity for the late days of October, early days of November. This will continue throughout 2024 for that. So that's what's going to be happening on the early voting process. Any more questions from the board of the audience, feel free to contact us, we're more than happy to answer your questions. The other one is in reference to the Northeast Oakland Historical Society. We usually give them a contribution over the past years. We did put in place a request for contribution. They filled out a portion of that contribution, but did not fill out the remaining requirements to provide us with minutes, financial statements, or our year-to-date revenue expense summary report. So based on not having those items returned to us, they chose to return the check to the township. So at this point, there's no contribution to the historical society due to lack of information. So just wanted to update the board on that. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Treasurer Ferrari?
I don't have anything.
Trustee Noel?
Thank you, but no thank you.
Trustee Payne?
Nothing at this time.
Trustee Colvin?
I just want to clarify with trustee Charles' statement that lizards and warlocks are welcome at witches' night, so that's all.
Okay, thank you, I just have a couple. One, we have put on social media, we've ran ads in the Oxford Leader, we've talked several times about the tri-county internet survey for receiving who's got weak broadband and internet service in the area. They keep sending emails and showing us at the lowest point. Maybe people can't get on the internet and fill out the survey, I don't know. But if you know of any homeowners association groups you can get with, or I've reached out to some, to Rattlewood Farms and things, they hold events out there. If you're interested in achieving internet in areas that are underserved, please fill out the survey. Oakland County is taking the charge of that. Commissioner Spiz is sending out surveys. So we're just trying to get people to fill them out. Secondly, you'll see that we are going to have a special meeting. I sent out an email and we will talk about it later tonight. Special meeting on October 25th. October 25th at 6:00 PM. We're gonna have a special meeting to hold a public hearing on our special assessment district for our North Area Sewer SAD. Other than that, that's it. We'll move on to item number eight. Safety path, first reading. Joe?
Board members, if front of you is our safety path ordinance, a chance to do some revisions? If there's any questions, we'll entertain them now. If not, we'll have a second reading and we'll get that over to the board in November.
Are there any questions for Treasurer Ferrari regarding the safety path ordinance? Trustee?
Well, I have an unrelated question, but it maybe ties in. When there's an issue with some of the safety paths, like obstructions and things, I know it's unrelated to the ordinance, what do we do about that? I'm thinking, for example, on West Drainer, there's some obstructions that blocked the view, I'm sure Mr. Wright is aware of it.
We contact Treasurer Ferrari, he's the safety path chair, and he addresses it through a maintenance program.
Okay, good deal, thank you.
Okay. I move to approve. I'm sorry, trustee Noel?
Section 4.2-105B.
4.2-105B.
Language added to state that the path depicted in the township master plan will not be eligible for the in lieu of the payment option. I need clarification or understanding that we, safety path has its own master plan, the township has its own master plan, and we're in the midst of starting the development of a revised version for the township. How does this fold in?
I can help you with that one. The township set, master plan includes the township safety path master plan. The planning commission recommends the safety path master plan, and the board adopts it, and it's included in the master plan. So what happened was, there was some confusion over the years, and we were, it was a moving target. In reality, we had to stay with the one that was presented in 2019. So to date, we're sticking with the one that is in the master plan for 2019, and as the new master plan evolves, so will the township safety path master plan.
So, Mr. Chair, the safety path master plan will call out specific areas that are to be not eligible for in lieu of?
Yes.
I mean, others.
Okay. Yes. All right. Any other questions? Seeing none?
I move to approve the first reading of the amendment to Oxford Township's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 42, Street Sidewalks, Other Public Places, Article 3, Safety Path and Sidewalks, and direct the township clerk to publish said ordinance, according to state law, and hereby set the second reading of said ordinance amendment for November 8th, 2023.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, the second by trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Item nine, fire department. Boy didn't gang it up on us tonight, really. Request to schedule open burn and false alarm ordinance amendments for first reading.
Good evening, board. Brought the fire marshal, EJ Franz with me tonight, because this is his area of expertise, but he's worked closely with Attorney Vasquez from the Kelly Firm to revamp and update and make our burn ordinance easier for people to read, understand, and follow, we believe, and make the permitting process easier for everybody to use, and actually for people to become more compliant, actually, by simply, by simplifying the process. I'm fighting the cold, he's gonna answer most of your questions tonight, though, so have at it with him.
Okay, the, the change to the ordinance, the redline copy was in the minutes, or in the packet.
Yes.
So if you had a chance to read them, and I'll entertain questions now, but we, we are only scheduling the first reading at the next meeting. So are there any questions for Fire Marshal Franz on the change in the fire and burning ordinances? Well?
Go ahead, John.
Trustee Noel?
In the last ordinance that we just talked about for the safety path, they talked about ordinance by resolution for fees. We have in this fire ordinance fees. How do we hand the plan to you?
Fees are for what? I guess, I don't know. There, I think there might be some punitive fees, but those have always been in there.
Alarm fee schedules?
Oh, the alarm fees, now that's a whole, I thought we were just talking about burn.
Yeah, we're just talking about burn.
Burn permits. I don't think there's any fees, other than if you are in violation. And I think that was original to the ordinance.
If you, anybody can obtain a burn permit today, there's no fee for it.
Correct, correct. There's still no, there's still no. We're actually, the whole process, the whole point of this was, our burn permit process is kinda.
Antiquated.
Yeah, we don't use it anymore. People call, people call in, it actually kind of overwhelms our system. They call in to get these burn permits that we don't ever inspect. Only time we go out and inspect a burn permit is if we have a call for a violation. So we have all these burn permits coming in, they're calling and renewing their burn permits, kind of for no reason. So we're, we just really want to set the rules out, and you follow the rules, you mean you're still gonna call, make sure that burning's allowed, and after you follow those rules, if we have an issue after that, then we will do an investigation.
Got it, your question was?
I'm gonna follow up what you said, that was my second part. I can't find the part with the fees right now, but I understand this is scheduled for first reading.
So we'll have another chance to address that question, there's no pressure.
No. I pass. Thank you.
Okay. Treasurer Ferrari?
Instead of going narrow, has part of our, consider maybe monitoring these burn permits? Instead of scrapping them?
As opposed, like, how?
Instead of scrapping them. Like, let's say, Jack and I call in.
Yep.
We're each gonna do a bonfire or something.
Sure.
Shouldn't somebody at your end at least get note of that? So if there's a problem, a neighbor calls, says, hey, what's going on? Do you guys at least have that knowledge?
Well, that's not, it's not how we operate now. Essentially, you just call, like, I don't think we have the staff to go out and inspect all the burn permit areas in the township of every resident.
So anybody could do a burn permit?
Correct, yes, and they couldn't have.
They couldn't, that's how.
But the rule hasn't changed. You would just call and say, hey, I need a burn permit, and we would say, okay, here you go.
But should we formalize that process? We have records of all this stuff? Do we want every, the doctors burning willy-nilly?
Well, they do that now.
They do that now. We don't have any records of it now under the current system.
That's all we have, is you saying that you have a burn permit and you have, there's a phone number attached to it.
Yeah. Should we try to tighten that up?
I don't, we don't have a problem with it now, so I don't know why. I don't see, I don't see, I think that would cause, that would overwhelm our staff trying to.
I think that would create a bureaucracy to it.
Correct, correct. If you follow the rules, then you're, you're compliant, as you are now.
I know, I had a great discussion with Chief and EJ. I have a burn permit. I have four different areas I burn, and according to the burn permit regulations, they're all illegal. But I call in, and I burn, and what happens?
We just go, you're right, correct. We don't want you to light your house on fire, we don't want you to light your neighbor's house on fire, so that's why the rules are what they are. For us to go out and inspect every burn pit in this township would overwhelm our staff.
But isn't that kind of our role? Safety, health and welfare of the community?
It is, and as long as people are doing things within the burn ordinance, as it's prescribed within the ordinance, we don't have any problems with it, and people don't have problems with it. The only time we get called out is when somebody is doing something, like recently when we had somebody trying to piecemeal burn a barn every night, you know, after it got dark. Yeah, obviously, we went after that, right? But that's when we find, that's how we find out this stuff. You know, if, if you or Mr. Curtis are gonna have people over this weekend and you have a, one of, either those manufactured fire pits, or as he has a bigger pit further away from the house out in back of the property, it's your right, as long as you're not burning trash, lumber, construction materials, right? And the only way we find that out is if we get a complaint. And then we, we will still, always go out to any complaint received, right? And if they, if we get there and we find that they're, pardon me, if we find that they're in violation of the ordinance, we, we actually have the sheriff's deputies come out, they issue a citation in violation of the ordinance, and we, and we extinguish any fire that is out of ordinance regulations, so to speak, right?
Look at it, one of my old houses, we have a, we had a wooden fence. The neighbor next door said she was tending to it, they had like a fire in like a little burn pit and all that, she was nowhere to be found.
Yeah, she would be in violation, whether she had a burn permit or not, she would be in violation. Right, and then.
Because they got caught my fence on fire, and they caught my house on fire.
Well, sure. But like, we aren't gonna go out and supervise her if she's having a fire, and making sure she doesn't, right, the whole time, like, that's on her, right? She's a citizen of this, like, I can't supervise everybody in the township having their fire, make sure they're constantly doing it correctly. That's why we have an ordinance, and if somebody complains, then we go and we, we check on the complaints, and we address them as appropriate, right? But even with that, we've gotten complaints, and we go there and there's nothing wrong. People are doing exactly what they're supposed to do. Some people just have neighbor issues. And that, in all honesty, it seems like that's probably our most common burn complaint, is a neighbor issue. And, and the people that are actually having a fire, whether it be in one of those little chimenea things, or an actual burn pit, or a bonfire, they're doing what they're allowed to do within the ordinance. It's just that it bothers a neighbor, right?
Trustee Charles?
First thing, you cleared up something for me, because I used to call in.
Yep.
Like, after a while, it's like, why am I bothering to do this kind of stuff?
Sure, and you're, that's still gonna be part of the process. We just want you to call, and you're gonna listen to a message, you say, you can or you can't. Because, I mean, you may not know that there's a ban on burning. Like high-windy days, drought times. So that part's gonna stay? We will still do that. What's that? That part's gonna stay? Yeah, yes. Now, yes, it won't be the same automated system, but there will still be a voice recording where you're just calling in to make sure that having a fire's okay.
Or the township maybe can communicate that as well.
Correct. Okay. And we, and we're, and we've revamped our website, and the ordinance, the current ordinance is on there, the new ordinance, if adopted, would then be on there. The rules, we would actually have, well, actually, we do have a kind of a, here's how to burn within the Oxford, you know, within the limits of the Oxford ordinance.
How would you start one of these fires? How would you get it going yourself? Kindling.
Liquid nails.
Newspaper.
Because the ordinance says, any liquid, any flammable.
We'll never use charcoal. Correct. You should never use flammable liquid. Even the charcoal lighter. No. No. Because the problem is, how much is enough?
Well, how much newspaper is enough?
Well, let's not get in the weeds here.
Yeah.
Are there any questions on the ordinance at this time? Clerk Wright?
It's more of a comment. The definitions could be put in alphabetical order. If you read lost.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good one. And your, your check and balances is neighbors, like you said.
Absolutely. That's all, that's all, the whole process, point of this wasn't to change anything or recreate the deal, it was, when I read the ordinance, the way it was written prior, I didn't understand it, so it made it very hard for me to enforce it, and I can't imagine the general public really understood it. And we're trying to eliminate a process that we really don't utilize anymore.
Just curiosity too, is how many calls have you had? How many citations have you written?
I mean, we get, depends on the time of year, we get calls, you know, in the fall, we get a.
We'll get that information for you.
Correct. Well, I can tell you, in, in my time here, now, the two and a half years I've been here, I know of two citations being issued, right? And they were both for gross violations of, one was burning on a day when there's like 60 mile an hour winds, right? And he was burning stuff other than just brush, and the other one was actually burning garbage, and like garbage bags and just refuse, and that was down in the south end. One was in the north, one was the south. Those are the only two citations that I can recall in my time here so far.
Trustee Noel?
Appropriate phone number might be included in the ordinance?
Okay.
It is in there.
Is it in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Payne, do you have your hand up?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Section D1, D1B, open burning regulations?
I see it.
That's where your phone number is.
Are there any other questions? Look for a motion to schedule the first reading.
I would like that motion. This is to approve the first reading.
Yeah, I have a question for clarification, because the agenda says, request to schedule open burning and false alarm ordinance amendments for a first reading.
To schedule the first reading.
Right, but the, the motion that is in the packet is treating this as the first reading and scheduling the second reading.
We, we were under the impression that we'd asked to have this brought, so that we could schedule the first reading for November, a second reading for December, and hopefully have the change enacted for the first of the year.
That was my understanding also.
That's what we had asked.
Okay, I just need, before somebody makes the motion, I wanted that to be clear.
Yep.
I move to schedule the first reading of the text amendments, the following section of the Township of Oxford, municipal code ordinances, Chapter 26, Section 26-17, and Chapter 30, Article 4, Division 3, Section 30-152. Direct the township clerk to publish said ordinance, set first reading in accordance with the state law, and hereby, state law, at our November 8th, 2023 meeting. Second. Motion by Treasurer Ferrari, the second by trustee Noel. Questions? Clerk Wright?
For a first reading, you don't have to publish the said ordinance?
Don't you normally, or no?
Not for the second reading, yes. Twenty else here, if you can clarify.
No, you don't need to publish for the first reading. Publish following the first reading.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Clerk Wright, no. Trustee Charles?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
No.
And Supervisor Curtis?
No.
I move to schedule the first reading of the text amendments, the following section of the Township of Oxford municipal code ordinances, Chapter 26, Section 26-17, Chapter 30, Article 4, Division 3, Section 3-12, for November 8th, 2023 Township Board Meeting.
Sir.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, the second by trustee Colvin. Any questions? Roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Thank you. Anything else from the fire department tonight?
Do we have any questions? I don't know.
Are you having an open house on Halloween evening?
We are. We will be, we will be hosting cider and donuts at both stations as usual. That will start about an hour, a half hour to an hour into trick-or-treating and go till just after trick-or-treating ends, so that people can get their full peruse of the village and township candy give-out, and then come get some cider and donuts from us on their way in for the evening. So.
We'll have those hours possibly approved at the end of this meeting.
No fire pit?
Item number 10.
Thank you.
Sharp engineering report. Board members in your packet, it was a report from Engineer Sharp with the updates on all of the township municipal projects. Are there any questions on those projects? Engineer Sharp is out of pocket, and I can, I'll try to answer any of them for you. Hearing none?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hearing none, we'll move on. Item number 11, unfinished business. Item A, trustee Charles asked at the last meeting that we bring this up to the board, single waste hauler update discussion. What I'd like to do is have Attorney Ellis come up and give us a snapshot of where we're at, and what, what we need to do to move forward, or backwards, or stop, or whatever.
Good evening. This board will recall at its meeting back in April that you held a hearing on, and to review potential bids for your single hauler. At that time, the board had decided that they thought there may have been some irregularities in the process, and the single hauler subcommittee was authorized to work to prepare a bid that eventually, it appears that the intent was that eventually it would be rebid, with those irregularities in process having been addressed. That being said, it seems that that never occurred. So now that it's been brought back to the board, my advice is that you give your subcommittee some guidance on what you're looking for, i.e., is this board still interested in moving forward with single hauler? If you are, do you want your single hauler subcommittee to prepare a bid? If so, what's your timeframe? I have 90 days in a proposed motion, can be longer, it can be shorter, whatever this board's prerogative is. And lastly, if you are going to authorize your subcommittee to go reengage in this process, do you want to give them the authority to reengage with your single hauler contractor, RRS, who you, who you were previously working with on this process? If you decide to tell your single hauler subcommittee to move forward with the bid, the way that process would look is, the township board would receive bids and consider them, and at that time, if it makes sense for the community, and it's the board's prerogative to move forward with the single hauler process, you would consider an ordinance at that time. There's been some questions on the process, should you approve an ordinance first or take in bids first? It is my recommendation that you take in bids first, because once you approve that ordinance, you've authorized single hauler in this community, you may or may not want to move forward with single hauler once you receive bids, and you have an understanding of what that will look like for your community. So before you, you have a couple motions, and you have a couple things to discuss, i.e. as far as what the board wants to do moving forward with single hauler. I'm available for questions.
Okay, Ellis, any questions? Treasurer Ferrari, sign your hand up.
My thinking on this, as we had that public meeting, there's a lot of comments that were brought up, our community. My pitch would kick that, and those comments back to the committee, take them under advisement. Was there any merit in breaking it into zones? There's like, probably good 10 to 12 questions asked. Kick it back to them, let them address all that, then bring it back to us for whether we want to go further. Myself, there's probably, I don't know if you guys agree, there's some good questions that were raised. I would hate to go ahead and people say, what about this question I asked? We need to consider it. Kick it back to them.
Trustee Charles?
Well, I somewhat disagree with Mr. Ferrari that the meeting there represented the community. There's a small number of people there, so that's not accurate at all. Not to say we ignore what those people said, but that's not a representation of 20,000 people. And I want to clarify, your guides would be to have bids go out first, then do an ordinance, is that what you're?
Correct, and that may allow this board to answer some questions the community may have, i.e. how the cost may be a significant benefit to the community.
Now, could we do that simultaneously?
Yes, so you'll see from my letter, I have your prior timeline, that was set on the prior, you know, how we were moving forward on this previously. the prior, you know, how we were moving forward on this previously. And in that, you'll know that on the date that bids were to be considered by this board, a first reading of the ordinance was also being considered at that time. Neither went forward, but we would follow it, we would reset, obviously, we would set out the timeline, um, but it would be a similar timeline as to your previous, as far as process.
All right, I think I'll take a quick comment then, Mr., I guess Mr. Wright, but, um, I think we all feel like we need to move forward some way. You know, that's, that's the objective. You can't just let it sit there. It's been doing for the last couple of months. That's where we want to go with this tonight, you know, just.
Clerk Wright? Got a lot of those, uh, the, the, uh, Trustee Noel or, uh, Trustee Payne had comments, but I'll, I'll comment. Um, going, going back to April twelfth, that, that was a, an event that, uh, really spoke, as Trustee Charles said, from those that were adamant about either keeping what they had, was curious about what needed to be, what they wanted to see in a, a single waste holler, and just, just a lot of questions came out of it. We have those questions right here. It's a pretty thick packet. So, so with that in mind, there, there's several things that I, uh, want to bring forward is, um, number one, is the board still comfortable with the committee members that's there to move forward? Number two is in the proposed motion, um, I'm thinking that it almost has the appearance of a quorum with the board if you're going to include the supervisor with the committee. That's one of my concerns.
I can address that. Um, so it says in conjunction with the supervisor and the township attorney, meaning that township supervisor and myself would have sign off on the bid before it goes out. It doesn't imply that the supervisor will be involved in those negotiations or that writing the actual bid, yes.
All right, good, good. Um, the other issue is that we are in a process of revising our procurement policy.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know where that plays into going forward with, uh, going out for bids, and then in the process you change, or the board changes what that procurement policy's going to look like to go out for those bids, so.
So if you submit, if you put your bid out before your procurement policy is enacted, your new procurement policy, you follow your current procurement policy that's in effect.
Okay, okay. And, and, uh, in, uh, referring to the ordinance, um, it, it's almost as if, uh, I mean, for me as a committee member, it's almost like we were to have, like, ordinance in place before we proceeded out with the RFP, and now it's going through the RFP, and then the ordinance is going to follow. So I don't know if that's something that should be done in conjunction, you know, where you pursue the first and second reading and get your, you get your, uh, RFP in, and then you can tie your RFP back to the ordinance if you decide to choose a holler.
Correct, so my recommendation is, it, as a matter of policy, you want to see what that pricing is going to be, right, when you get your bids in. You want to open your bids and say, do we even want to move forward with single holler now that we see what the pricing is, the available pricing is? Um, you don't want to adopt an ordinance before you're at that point, so I, my advice would be at least do your first reading after you've opened bids and you've determined this makes sense cost-wise for our community. Um, you don't want to pass an ordinance and then open your bids and say, well, this way, this doesn't make any sense for us, it's not something we're interested in, and now you wasted all this time and expense going through first and second reading.
Sure, okay. And then, uh, and then in reference to the RRS, our consultant, we've already paid for the first three, uh, task is what it was called, like that, so indirectly we'd be down to the fourth task, but in a sense, we're starting over, so I don't know how much more involvement would we need from the consultant because we have the database, all the information that's been provided up to this point. I mean, I mean, I, I defer to Trustee Payne and Trustee Noel, whether the thought would be if we entertain Payne, the consultant, to redo what he's already done.
Well, that's ultimately a board decision, but Treasurer Ferrari raised a good point earlier, which is there's some questions about what districts should be included, what shouldn't. Um, you did have your consultant walking you through this RFP process in the past, um, so there may be some questions that come up from the public, from this board, from the subcommittee, that I'm not able to answer as your legal counsel because I'm not a professional resource consultant, or recycling consultant. Um, so in that vein, you may want to reengage them, but ultimately, that's a township decision. If you feel you have all the information you need, you have all the resources you need, we're going to use our prior RFP as presented, you may decide that you don't need to reengage, um, RRS, but, um, there is going to be some processes as well, remember, with rolling out the ordinance if you decide to go with single holler, um, that you may want to utilize their help with as well. Um, so ultimately, that's a township policy decision. Uh, that being said, I don't claim to be a recycling expert, so there may be some questions in this process that I can't answer as your legal counsel.
Is there any questions down here? Trustee Noel?
Within our RFP, I'll clear something up. We did call out in bold letters that we are under the development of an ordinance, and that they would be required to facilitate that ordinance if they were the winning bid.
Correct.
So that's in the RFP.
Okay.
Uh, I do not agree with this restart plan motion that you presented. The Waste Disposal Committee has not met since April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the Township Board meeting, uh, and therefore needs a voice in this activity. The request for proposal within the ninety days have been reviewed by the, has not been reviewed by the committee, and there has been discussion regarding RFP changes that are needed. I'd be in favor of, of asking the Waste Disposal Committee to conduct a, a restart evaluation, I like that word restart that you used, of what is needed for, to move forward. The topics would include RFP restructuring and changes, resource recycling services, contracts, availability of their business, the schedules, ordinance, uh, approval timing, and committee members' continuations, and then I added April twelfth questions. That would be what I would be interested in seeing done.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Charles, you had one more question?
Yeah, just, uh, going back to the timing of the protocol, this, could the committee then, before this next meeting, make that determination as to the necessity for doing this in one package? Is that a committee thing, or does that need to come to the board?
They can make, they're a recommending body, so they always have to come to the Township Board for final approval, but you can request that the subcommittee, the board can request that the subcommittee make that recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
At the same meeting.
At the same meeting.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Look for a motion.
I have a motion, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I, I motioned that we would ask the Waste Disposal Committee to conduct a restart evaluation of what is needed to move forward. Topics would include RFP restructuring and changes, resource recycling services contract and availability, schedules, ordinance approval timing, committee members continuation, and the April twelfth, April twelfth questions that were posed.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Trustee Noel, and a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Are there any questions?
I do. Well, Catherine's first.
Yes, Catherine. Trustee Noel, uh, Colvin, sorry.
Um, can we require this, uh, committee to report at the next meeting, at the November meeting?
I would add that to it. I think that can happen.
Well, then we have to vote down the first motion and add the second to it.
Let's do it.
Now, you got to remember. Go ahead. I'll call the roll.
Trustee Colvin?
No.
Trustee Payne?
No.
Trustee Noel?
No.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Clerk Wright, no. Trustee Charles?
No.
And Supervisor Curtis?
No.
Try again, Jen.
Is it November then?
I think it's November.
November eighth.
November eighth.
One more time. Thank you, Board. I make a motion that the Waste Hauler Disposal Committee to conduct a restart evaluation of what is needed to move forward. Topics would include RFP restructuring slash changes, resource recycling services, contract availability, schedules, ordinance approval timing, committee members continuation, and April twelfth questions. And this will be reported back to the, at the next Township Board meeting, November eighth.
Twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, uh, of Trustee Noel, and a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Are there any questions on the motion? Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I have concern about the topics and ability to produce by November eighth. That's my concern.
Then you come back at the November eighth meeting and tell us you couldn't get it done.
Well, I'm not saying that, but.
Well, that's what it is.
I'm not saying that.
Trustee Charles?
A couple comments. Would it be better that if you weren't on the committee, would that help?
Uh, you know, if someone wants to take the spot, they can do that, but I'm not saying I'm not willing to do it. I'm just looking at special meeting, other meetings, modern sewer meetings, those type of things to prepare for that actually make this all work.
But I, I have to say.
These guys live for my schedule.
No, I get it.
Hold on. Trustee Payne?
No, just go ahead.
Okay.
No, I mean, basically, I, I would say this, I, I think to move along to the next meeting would be appropriate, in my opinion.
Okay.
That's it. Can we go talk about it today?
Yeah.
All right, let's do it.
Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Motion carries. See you next month. Okay, here we are. Uh, item eleven B, North Area Sanitary Sewer SAD Resolution to set a public hearing. Uh, board members, you may recall, uh, March ninth of twenty twenty-two, we had our first, first public hearing. On, uh, April thirteenth, the resolution, uh, was to move forward with our, uh, sanitary sewer special assessment district. However, over the course of the, the previous year, the cost estimates have exceeded the ten percent. Therefore, pursuant to state law, new hearing must be, uh, given, afforded to the public and record owners of the properties to be assessed. You remember, the original cost was two million eight hundred thousand twenty-five, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, has now increased to three million five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, with a construction estimated cost of two million nine hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven. Due to the cost increase by law, the township has to redo its first public hearing. The resolution sets a public hearing for October twenty-fifth, uh, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Um, are there any questions?
I move to approve the North Sanitary Sewer District Resolution, number one, as presented. Hereby set the public hearing to your objections to the proposed improvement project, the petition, or the district on October fifth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. At the Township Hall, three hundred Dunlap Road, Oxford, Michigan, forty-three seven one.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. Are there any questions? Trustee Colvin?
It's October twenty-fifth, so.
October twenty-fifth, yes, ma'am. Six P M.
Six P M.
Yes. Any other questions?
No.
Roll call.
Uh, Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Item twelve A, Grapevine's Manor Subdivision Paving Special Assessment District. Uh, Clerk Wright?
The Grapevine's Manor subdivision has requested the Township Board consider a special assessment district for repaving of their streets. Uh, they have presented petitions to the township. Uh, those petitions have been confirmed through the qualified border file with their registered, uh, signature for their boarding, uh, boarding card there. This map here that you're seeing is the signatures that have been secured. There's twenty-five lots in the subdivision, seventeen signed, and, uh, Adam did not sign. So now the next step is to authorize the engineer to actually, uh, start the process of determining the boundary lines, location, and cost estimate. So with that, I'll move to authorize Sharp Engineering to determine the special assessment district boundary area, location, and cost estimate for the purpose of paving the streets in Grapevine's Manor's subdivision.
Second.
I have a motion by Clerk Wright, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Trustee Charles?
Are the cost of Engineer Sharp built into the end cost of this?
Yes.
Okay, and then how do we determine interest rate on, on this?
Go ahead.
Well, what will happen is, once the, once the roll is confirmed, in the last S A D resolution, the board will be able to set that interest rate.
Okay.
At that time.
And in terms, another question, I guess, second. Um, so this isn't first, this is, this precedent's already, already been set, right? We've done this many, many times over the past years, so.
Not many, many times, it's been done before.
Okay. All right.
Treasurer Ferrari?
We sent it down for a private road.
What is your question?
Oh, Brian had already answered. Ask my question.
Okay. Have there any other questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Twelve B, zoning Board of Appeals bylaws consideration for, of approval. Trustee Payne?
Board members, we, the zoning Board of Appeals met and reviewed the bylaw, our current bylaws, and we have two small minor changes, um, as you see there. One is to, uh, make sure that the, uh, member of a planning commission or township board can serve as the, um, as a chairperson. Previously, it had been say, it had said that we cannot serve as the chairperson. And then the other change is to make sure that the terms for office are no more than two consecutive terms for chairperson, vice chair, treasurer, or secretary. So with that, um, I move to approve the Zone Board of Appeals bylaws adopted on September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, to be effective immediately.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Trustee Payne and a second by Trustee Charles. Are there any questions? Clerk Wright?
Yeah, I, I went through this and, uh, I got authorization to contact attorney through Supervisor Curtis, and a couple things that, that stood out to me, that I got confirmation on, was in section two D, it talked about recording secretaries.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I'm lost there.
Two D?
Sorry about this.
Two terms of, of section one? You said section two D.
Recording secretary, about the, the, this recording secretary.
You said two D? Keep going. It's one D.
Yeah, secretary. It says such duties may be performed by an employed recording secretary. Currently, with the township, we're, all our secretaries are, uh, independent contractors, and, and, uh, the recommendation was Attorney McAdamy. She said, I'm fine with this change, so.
But we're not amending that, I don't think.
Not in your motion, you're not.
It just says an employed recording secretary, doesn't say who's recording, who's employing them.
So such duties may be performed by an employed recording secretary.
The employed secretary is being employed by the Z B A.
I guess maybe I'm splitting hairs. I, I don't know, but I'm thinking, you know, if you're, if you're employing somebody, you're going to give them a W two.
Okay, you're splitting hairs then.
Okay.
Employed, contracted, or subjected to doing the duties of. I guess that's what I'd be looking at.
Okay.
We could ask Attorney Ellis.
You could.
The word employed, uh, is that bad? Does that indicate the, the recording secretary is employed by the township, or is employed as a person doing a job?
I think it's a broad enough definition that it doesn't indicate that they are a W two receiving employee of the township. I think it's a wide enough definition that it meets the standard of.
Hosting.
What you're trying to attempt, yes.
Okay.
And the IRS has a sixteen-point test on ten ninety-nine versus W two, if you're ever interested.
Okay, what's your next question, Clerk Wright?
I, I will, uh, not even approach it.
Okay.
I'll just get a smothered ride.
We want you to charge up for that committee.
We have a motion on the floor. Roll call. Uh, Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Charles?
Yes. Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Item twelve C, mobile food establishment ordinance amendments. Supervisor Curtis. Uh, two items were mentioned in the past meetings. One was brought up from our township billing official, ordinance officer, and one was brought up here. Uh, the length of time a mobile food establishment can stay in one location is item number one, and item number two, the issue of the required safety inspection by the Oxford Fire Department if the mobile food establishment was already inspected by another local fire department. Board members, we have local food truck owners in Orion, they're going to the Orion Fire Department, they are getting their sticker as their, all the fire, uh, controls have been met. They come up to Oxford, they're asked to do it again, pay another form, get another sticker. It's basically the same inspection. We already require them to get a health inspection through the county. Everybody does, it's universal throughout the county, but here we have food trucks coming to Oxford that are inspected in Orion, or Oxford food trucks going to Waterford, and they're inspected in Oxford. Waterford requires them to get stuck. We're working municipality with Orion and Oakland right now to eliminate some of these duplications of effort. We're not trying to hit each food truck a hundred dollars in every community for our fire department to inspect the trucks, over and over. Well, we can entertain Matt if he wants to come up and ask his question.
My, my concern with that would be, in the case of Orion, yeah, our ordinance and their ordinance is our, uh, practically identical, but I couldn't tell you what Waterford's ordinance looks like, or the city of Detroit's, and I don't know. Do they all, do they all require the same things we do? Do they all require wheel checks? Do they all require, uh, the generator to be placed, uh, at a, you know, I don't know. Do they all, do they all require that the, the, um, the hood system have a suppression system? system? Do they, or do some just require that they have a K-rated extinguisher handy, available to extinguish a fire should one? I don't know.
So what we would, what we, what we would do then, before we would entertain that, is look at those ordinances before we included those communities. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, yeah. I would just want something that we know is, is meeting the, at least the same standard that we are.
Okay. That would be, it doesn't need to be in the motion, but we will do that to make the ordinance amendment more palatable.
Check out number one.
Trustee Charles?
Well, I'm glad you brought it up because when I looked at the word local, I thought the same thing. Maybe it's because of Mr. Wright, I'm picking little things apart, you know? I blame him. But no, I agree, and what's local could be anything. Could it be Kalamazoo? You know?
No, we, we will identify local. We will identify the departments that have the same inspection as Oxford's. We, we're concerned with us, mostly Orion and Oxford, because we interchange so.
Well, yeah, if I can go ahead, then what I would look at, if you're saying, put a list together, should that be part of this here? Because if I have this mobile food thing, and I look at your ordinance and it says local, and I say, well, jeez, local could be Kalamazoo or Washoe.
We will include the communities that we will be like.
That would be my, my only other then concern would be, is, um. You have to. Verifying that, uh, a food truck that comes in to say, uh, I don't, you know, that sits out by Burdick Street equipment again, you know, or well, actually, that's a bad one because it's in the Village Drake.
Seymour Lake?
Seymour Lake Park, right, exactly. How do we know who has been inspected and hasn't if we haven't had some kind of notification? There, we'd, we'd, we'd have to have some type of notification of who's being allowed in then.
Right.
Because otherwise, we're going out the day of and having to, are we gonna have to then go and check them out a day of inspection thing again?
Before we write this ordinance, we will address those concerns because, as directed right now, you're not told every food truck that goes everywhere in the community, you're told of the ones that are there, and you go out and do it. We're gonna tell you based on what you give us as the ones you will accept.
Yep, that, okay.
Fair? Trustee Noel first.
We have a permit they're supposed to have, so that could be your checks and balances.
Correct. They, they come in, they, they, they make application, we, we set up an appointment, we do the inspection of their, of their truck or their trailer, whatever the case may be, give them the ground rules of what we expect from them once they're set up on a site, and then, you know, then they're good to go.
The same requirement as Orion.
Yeah. So, so then going back to attorney, do you feel that?
Ask me the question.
Okay. The attorney supervisor then, um, do we have the capability of communicating with all these other communities, whatever you want to define local as to make?
I'm meeting with all of them next week, Monday. And we're talking about this subject.
And this is like Oakland County, state of Michigan?
No, just Oakland County.
So then in the ordinance, it could say Oakland County Fire Department?
It could say Lake Orion Fire Department, Orion Township Fire Department, it could say Oakland Township Fire Department, are the only three that we allow no inspection by Oxford Township.
So some reciprocity, and they would do the same thing?
Correct. Orion is looking at doing the same thing because the food truck vendors, food establishment vendors are going between our two communities and having to schedule an inspection here, and they just got one the previous Friday in Lake Orion. So it's like we're trying to make it easy for them and.
Yeah, our biggest concern, and as Orion's would be, I would, I could, I can guarantee, I can speak for him on this, is that it be, that the suppression systems that are in place for their hood systems and for their manual fire extinguisher. We both require the same stuff, and I, it, it just makes sense. Some communities may not, and that would be our biggest concern. So, yeah.
Okay. We will, um, we will amend the ordinance with the direction of the fire chief's recommendations, looking at other communities' requirements for their food truck licensing in our communities. Treasurer Ferrari?
That is very important, but please don't lose sight of number one either.
Oh, no, no, number one is critical because.
Well, that's the reason I brought it up, yeah.
That's, that, that's a real important one, too.
Number one is critical, yes.
I move to authorize the Kelly Firm to review and propose possible amendments to mobile food establishment ordinance, present them for consideration for first reading on the November 8th, 2023, Charter Township of Oxford, Board of Trustees' regular meeting.
Second, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes, Trustee Charles?
What are some examples of reasonable timeframes that would be possibly included in this?
What do you mean reasonable timeframes?
Well, I mean, we're talking 24 hours, 48 hours, six weeks, six months?
You'll know on November 8th.
Well, I mean, right now, what's out there is what would be, you know, what other, you know, probably other communities, what other communities doing?
Right now, we are assuming it's 24 hours, and we have one there that's been there for two years. So a recommendation would be.
If I may?
Yes.
There are, uh, like, as if we had the Seymour Lake celebration, if they, if the event lasted for a period of two weeks, right? You could allow that person or that, uh, truck to set up for each weekend or something like that under the same permit. That would be allowable for a special occasion type of thing that you guys can work in. And that's why I brought it up, because that's a very.
Hold on, stop. We're not talking about the permit. We are talking about the in safety inspection only in that instance. The, the location establishments are ones that sit on the corner of M 24 and Metamora Road for two years.
Well, I'll disagree. It says right here, the length of time.
The length of time a mobile food establishment can stay in one location.
Right. And what I said is, what are some examples we've seen?
We've got one that's out there two years, and we've got one that's sat there for two, uh, for a weekend. When, when the amendment comes back, it will be palatable to the community and to the, um, ordinance officer. Any other questions?
Just a comment.
Yes. Clerk Wright?
I know, I know last year, when the township and the fire department handled this simultaneously on the application, it, it would require the applicant to indicate how long they'd be, uh, at that particular venue, so I don't know if that's something that still is in place or not, but that would, that would, uh, they would confirm.
That, that's where I guess I was addressing with Trustee Charles and the chief. The difference between the permit and what we allow, the permit is Seymour Celebration is five days. The permit's gonna state, we're gonna be at the Seymour Celebration for five days. The length of time is, you're not gonna be sitting there longer than permitted. The ones that are there for two years aren't permitted, but we don't have an ordinance to get rid of it.
Makes sense.
Thank you. Sorry. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Sorry about the back and forth on that one, it's a little, he didn't make it clear when he wrote that up. Supervisor Curtis? Item 12D, zoning ordinance 67A, text amendments for noise regulation. Trustee Noel?
Board members, the Planning Commission is forward for its first reading of zoning order 67A to amend, uh, and, uh, accessory generator noise within the township. I move to schedule a first reading of the text amendment to zoning order 67A, section 10.1 J, at the November 8th, 2023, Charter Township of Oxford, Board of Trustees' regular meeting.
Second. A motion by Trustee Noel, the second by Treasurer Ferrari. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
12E, employee health insurance funding. Clerk Wright?
Yeah, this is an annual renewal of our insurance coverages, and in your packet, you'll see that the township must decide whether to fund it on a hard cap, on an E20 plan, or to opt out and decide how much they want the employees to contribute, if anything at all, on that. So with that, I'll move that the Charter Township of Oxford exercises the opt-out provision, which allows the local union of government, the Charter Township of Oxford, to determine the contribution amount for healthcare coverage for the 2023-2024 plan year.
I will second that.
A motion by Clerk Wright, a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, any questions? Roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Item 12F, employee health insurance renewal. Clerk Wright?
Okay, now that we've opted out, now it's the ability to renew the plans we have in place, and, uh, those plans are the current, uh, H R A P P O 1500 plan with Blue Cross Blue Shield, plus the plan for retirees on the, uh, Plan 250 Platinum P P O per community Blue, Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Board members, I, the motion we've got here, I'm only gonna make a change to it in the second paragraph, that this could be just one pot, there'll be no distinction between coinsurance and all other H R A 213D plan expenses, to make it easier to administer and to be fair for everybody. I move that Oxford Township renew the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance for Group 007011799, Division 0000, Oxford Fire Department, Group 007011799, Division 0002, Oxford Township Employees, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue H R A P P O Platinum 1500 Plan, effective December 1, 2023. Authorize Behrens, Henderson, Stewie, before the appropriate paper to Blue Cross Blue Shield, activate the Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue P P O Plan and 1500 Plan. All members enrolled on the Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue H R A P P O Plan and 1500 Plan shall contribute 5% of the premium cost, effective December 1, 2023. Also, the Charter Township of Oxford shall fund a health reimbursement arrangement to, to, 213D plan, account effective January 1, 2024, and cover any additional expenses incurred, including but not limited to deductibles, coinsurance, emergency room visits, and prescription drugs. There, there shall be no distinction between coinsurance and all H R A 213D plan expenses. Further, Oxford Township should renew the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance for Group 007011799, Division 0001, Oxford Police Retiree, and Group 007011799, Division 0003, Oxford Township Fire Police Retiree, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue P P O Platinum 250 Plan, effective December 1st, 2023.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, the second by Trustee Noel. That was gonna be funny to have you read it again, but I won't. Are there any questions? Trustee Payne?
Yes, this, uh, second paragraph, is this a new, um, a new benefit that we're going to cover additional causes, uh, additional expense?
Well, basically, we have the one pot, we have another pot for coinsurance. Instead of having the two separate pots, it'll be one pot.
There, there would be no additional expense, they're just merging the two pots.
Okay, gotcha.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari. Was that a second, Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And, um, no other questions? Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I'm gonna hit you with the hammer if you do this wrong. Item 12G, Boulder Point Golf Course Tunnel Structural Engineer Authorization, Safety Path Committee?
Our board members, there's a chance that we may be able to connect the safety path with a tunnel underneath M 24. It's been offered to us. We wanna take a look at whether it's structurally sound. So we'd like to, basically, go ahead to see whether we take it or not to make sure we meet our needs. So I think it behooves us to kinda take a look at it first before we proceed.
You know, it's, it's connecting two safety paths, and we were given the, before we agreed to take the tunnel, we have to prove it sound and structurally good, number one. Number two, we've been given the authority to have the two safety paths connected on both sides of M 24. So with that consideration, we're asking the board to, um, fund the structural engineering of the tunnel.
I'll make a motion with the Oxford Township Procurement Policy, authorize S M E to proceed, the structural integrity report on existing tunnel, that currently runs beneath M 24, for potential free chief of ser, safety path connection, in the amount of $12,600. These funds are to be expensed to 297-852-821-000.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. I see a question. Trustee Noel?
The fund 297, what, what fund is that? Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have a question?
No.
Oh, I think.
Yes, Trustee Charles?
But this is just to clarify, having it investigated for like another term, it's not to approve it, right?
Right.
With that in said, I understand that part, then, good. I just, I'm glad to hear that the possibility, because this hasn't gone through yet, would be connecting safety paths, because I didn't wanna, would it be right now, it'd be just be a dead end, which would make no sense. So that, that was a good point. There, there's a thought, you know, this is going forward, not necessarily with this particular resolution. Would it be, if we're gonna use it for a safety path, would we want something that eventually, that would say no golf carts? Because you can't get both through there at the same time.
We are, right now, just.
I know we're just looking into it.
Thank you.
I get it, but I just wanna make sure it's in our thoughts as we go forward.
It is in our thoughts.
In our prayers.
Yes, in our prayers. I have a motion, a second. Roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Um, I just wanna talk about that for a minute. The only reason we're augmenting our, uh, procurement policy is we went out rapidly to all the structural engineers in the state of Michigan, and we got one response, so just bear that in mind. Item number 12H, Charge EV is the name of the company, L L C, Charging Station Agreement. Board members, I sent an email out with the correct agreement, uh, where I removed Seymour Lake Park from the agreement, as they are gonna take their, uh, resolution to their board and commission and handle their chargers on their own. What I'm asking is for us to engage in, uh, an agreement with, uh, Charge LLC at no cost to the township, uh, the installation of the charging station in our parking lot for EV vehicles. The total cost will be borne by the, uh, Charge EV company, and we will share the revenue, if there's any, uh, with Charge EV. Is there any questions?
I move to approve the revised agreement of, for Charge EV LLC, Charging Station Agreement, with Charge EV LLC, authorizes a township supervisor to execute the same.
Second. A motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Trustee Noel?
The Kelly Firm was very kind to point out how the public will be charged for that.
Yes.
Do you have any recollection if that came up during our meeting with them?
Uh, no, there's no set price right now. Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, board members, item number twelve, I, I'll handle this one, too. Water and Sewer Committee Willow Lake Pressure Reducing Valve Engineering Design Approval. Um, Willow Lake Pressure Reducing Valve needs to be replaced at the Willow Lake current PRV location. Uh, with the, uh, pressures that the, uh, water tower has on the effect of downstream, this has been a known situation for how many years?
Twenty?
Twenty years. Because we're now getting around to saying we can't blow any more faucets off. So, um, we're asking for Engineer Sharp to design the PRV and not to exceed the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
I move, I move to approve and not to exceed the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Authorize Sharp Engineering to proceed with the engineering design for the upgrades to the pressure reducing valve. Look at the Willow Lake subdivision. This hundred thousand dollars amount is the expense of the water fund account. Five-nine-one dash five-nine-eight dash eight-two-one point zero-zero-zero. Is your in fees general?
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, the second by Trustee Noel. Or, any questions from the board members?
I have a question. Is it five-nine-eight?
It says five, no, it says five-nine-one, right?
Five-nine-one, what are the next three?
Hold on, hold on. Five-nine-one, five-three-eight, eight-two-one.
Thank you.
Any questions? Roll call.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Oh, me again. Uh, item twelve J eleven-twenty-five Woodbrier Court Water Loss Invoice Adjustment Request. Board members, uh, this is an additional, uh, request for water loss invoice adjustment from Oakland County. A citizen at eleven-twenty-five Woodbrier, um, had a water leak at the sprinkler line, and the bill was, uh, uh, way above what they normally paid. I'm gonna pull it up right now. Uh, where was the amount? Yeah, eight-fifty-seventy-one. The adjustment amount, uh, totaled a three-hundred-and-sixty-five, three-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollar and five cent credit. After we took the normal adjustment of the bill out, we agreed to pay. Uh, the Water and Sewer Committee recommended that we pay fifty percent of the difference.
I move to adjust the water bill dated August eighth, twenty twenty-three to the property located at eleven-twenty-five Woodbrier Court due to reported water loss with a credit in the amount of three-sixty-eight oh-five, representing fifty percent of the difference on the original bill amount, eight-fifty-seventy-one. Adjust the bill amount one-fourteen-sixty-two. The revised water bill due for eleven-twenty-five Woodbrier Court is four-eighty-two-sixty-six. Any future requests for water loss adjustments will be addressed on a case-by-case basis.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, the second by Supervisor Curtis. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Twelve K. I'll take that one again. Uh, Canid Materials Request to Connect to Oxford Township Water System. Uh, board members, uh, letter in the packet from Kemp Building and Development requesting to connect the new, uh, building at, uh, nineteen-fifty Lakeville Road for Canid Materials. The water request is for the new office, for the bathrooms in the new office, and fire suppression in the building. Uh, this is not putting Canid Materials in the Water and Sewer District. This is only allowing them to utilize the pre-installed sewer tap or water tap to, uh, fire suppress the building and potable water.
Water Sewer was okay with it?
Water and Sewer is recommending this.
I move to approve their request in Kemp Building and Development Company that Canid Materials be allowed to connect to the Oxford Township Water System to install a water line to their new construction building, be used in the building, and to include fire hydrants, fire protection, domestic use.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Again, they are not in the Water and Sewer District, we're just looking up their building. Roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Board members, the following motion is offered to confirm the Halloween trick-or-treat hours for twenty twenty-three in Oxford Township. I discussed this with Joe Mador today. The Village Council approved last night the same hours.
I move this up to Halloween trick-or-treat hours for Oxford Township from six PM to seven-thirty PM on Tuesday, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Whoa. I'm gonna give this one, Treasurer Ferrari moved, Trustee Charles seconded. Are there any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, hearing none. Item twelve M CDBG twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five Funding Discussion.
Uh, board members, those brought to the, uh, my attention that, uh, you guys may be interested in looking at different projects that Block Rank can fund. Attent, or in several packets, there's different things that are available. If any ideas or anything, let me know. Uh, right now, we have people on a waiting list for Mobile Home Line Home Repair. That should get maybe another year or two through, and then after that, we'll probably open for new projects. If you have anything to suggest, or even this year, let me know, and we'll get it going.
You know, this discussion was asked by the board, uh, what, what, how come, who gets to choose? Well, Treasurer Ferrari is now seeking that input. So if you have any input as to what the CB, CDEG funds go through, please, you can copy me and send them to Joe.
Okay.
Okay? Item thirteen, Items Removed From the Consent Agenda for Action or Discussion. Board members, I ask the committee and representative reports be pulled from the consent agenda, just so we can talk about it. Um, we have a lot of committees. Some are active throughout the year, some are once a year, some are ending, some are ongoing. Uh, however, we got reports, we didn't get some from, and I'm gonna go through, and we're just, we're not complaining, we're just talking as to why. CDBG, we, we don't, no one's met, tonight would be the first one. There wouldn't be any meeting committee report for that. I'm, uh, gravel inspection, that's scheduled for October eighteenth. I should've sit in a slip and said, no meeting has been, October eighteenth. You know, it's my fault, I didn't do it. Hazardous waste, no has. Um, you know, that was held what, last weekend?
Yeah, but that's finishing up.
Yeah, so next month we'll have that in there. Uh, North Oakland Transportation, two board members here said on that, we had no meeting minutes or no committee report. Uh, Oxford Area Cable TV, we had nothing from them. Oxford Addison Youth, Oxford Downtown Development, uh, Plan Unit Development Committee, is there even one anymore? Um, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments and the union negotiations, which is understandable. We haven't had any of those. Uh, the ZBA. What we're doing with these committee reports and representative reports, we're actually learning what's going on in the committees, but we're also providing them for audit trails in our payroll department. When a member goes to a committee meeting, if you didn't have a meeting, if you look at the committee reports, they clearly call out, a meeting was held this day, this day. It's just another avenue of, uh, audit trail for payroll. So, good job, we're gonna get better at it. It's better information. If you read it in your packet, it's full of what's going on in our community. I don't think that needs any motion or anything to approve it, it's just, uh, in the packet. Moving on, fourteen, Public Comment. Is there anyone in the public that wants to make a comment? Seeing none. Board of Trustees' comments. Trustee Colvin?
I have no comments right now.
Trustee Payne?
Um, when we attended, I attended the MTA, uh, pub, um, professional development conference last week. One of the vendors there was a web designer, and we have talked about, um, looking to, to redesign our website. Um, this company will, has done Addison's website, and they've also done, I guess, our Parks and Rec website. So, you know, I don't know if there's a committee looking into this, who's looking into this, but if you need that, need or want that information, I have it.
Um, if I may, Treasurer Ferrari offered to take that under his wing.
Is that to me? I'll bet some more.
Was that STG?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were pretty sharp.
Yeah, I was impressed.
What, a comment or?
No, I'm, uh...
I'm all set.
Uh, Trustee Noel?
Thank you, good, thank you.
I'm all set.
Trust, Clerk Wright?
Yeah, just going back to the fire alarm, or, since I didn't get a chance to go on that.
The fire, what?
Uh, the fire alarm ordinance, an open, open burn. But anyway, there's, there's maybe, this is, uh, this is a comment.
Okay, just a comment.
My comment is, actually, the question, um, I'm just, I'm curious on the exhibits, if they're gonna be part of the packet for November, that's my comment.
Okay.
There, there are resolutions and fee schedules. So I don't, that's my comment.
We'll address that in a minute. Okay? Is that it?
Yeah.
Trustee Charles?
Let me catch my breath first. Anyhow, I'll go back to what, uh, Mark said about, I agree emphatically about looking at a, uh, different website to be played. I think we need to upgrade ours, change it. And I like that I softened that company. Uh, Addison uses them, and as she said, Parks Rec uses them. It doesn't have to be them necessarily, and I endorse them, I'm just saying we need to make some changes for our website, and there's somebody right there that's done it locally that looks very professional, so, might be as well.
All right. I have two comments. Uh, Clerk Wright, how many items did we not put on this agenda tonight?
Well, probably about, if you, for the resolutions that we left off for next month, probably about fifteen there, there.
Sixteen, we added, we have left sixteen items off this agenda that we have been working on. Sixteen plus the twenty that are on here. We're emphatically, we're, we're, we're doing our job, we're working hard and consistently and sharp. But we, we almost entertained having a scheduled second meeting. But what we're gonna do is our next October twenty-fifth meeting, we will have a couple of those items on there so that we can continue to move forward. But we have a lot of items that are, are pressing our community. I wanted to update you on, we have hit over a thousand building permits in September. Uh, October first, we had over a thousand building permits, and it's not stopping. Three pre-construction meetings have hit here. Our hospital, uh, emergency medical care set the final beam last week, and they're, they're going full speed ahead to get this done. I'm meeting with developers and landowners daily, and things that are coming here, we keep getting more and more. I just wanna let you know, you're not getting half of what this board would be doing. Yes, Trustee Payne?
Quick redo. Um, the year, many years ago, the board, the Township Board met twice a month. And if we're coming to that point, I would leave it to the office, or the elected officials, to make that determination that we need to go to two meetings a month.
Okay. You know, yeah, and I'm trying not to do it, but it's to the point now where we have so much on there that we need to keep it going. We have another special meeting for our public hearing, I can sneak a few things in there. November's gonna be a full, full meeting again. And it's, it's, it's us talking and working in the committees and coming in the office and talking that makes these meetings go fast. But it's a lot of work that has to take to get it done. So I just wanted to make, thank you all for making it go this fast. Anything else?
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Okay.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, the second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Roll call? No. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, stay here.